I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Jeff Har.
Here.
Marple.
Here.
Myers. Sargent.
Here.
Swing him around.
Here.
Seth.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, so, um, welcome.
It's the work session.
Oh, this is the work session? Oh, gosh.
That's what I thought.
I'm not dealing with transition very well at all. So we're all ready for the meeting. Okay, I don't need to do anything. Lead the budget. Yes?
Thank you, Board President Marcus, board members. So good to see everyone here in person. I'm going to be turning the presentation over to our CFO, Bill Sutter, to give us a preliminary budget presentation for this workshop.
All right, thanks, Rob. This slide should be coming up. All right. This will be a little tricky to manage this since we haven't done it in here for a while, so best of luck to everybody. So this is the preliminary budget work session for the 2021-22 school year. So this is a point in the process where the board gets to hear an update-
This call is now being recorded.
On the preliminary budget and have some discussion. The presentation will be given again during the board meeting following this work session for public viewing. A little different now that we are doing these virtually as well, so it's more out there in the board meeting. So, next slide. So as a quick overview of what we'll look at, the budget development timeline and milestones, input that we've received on budget development, enrollment, the preliminary budget, and next steps. Next slide. The timeline and milestones, so this is just a little refresher from what we've seen a few times. Next slide. So as a reminder, we started this conversation back in September. The opportunity for stakeholder input exists throughout these several months of budget development. The red line there is about where we are right now at the work session on April 13th. We've received lots of data inputs, the brown rectangles on this, and received some feedback from the board as we've had prior work sessions and board meetings regarding the budget, and also taken some actions as we've actually distributed staffing, which is a major commitment of the budget. Next slide. So this is just a little reminder of the upcoming four sort of major pieces that are left. The proposed budget going to the board at the end of May. The General Assembly adjourning in sort of early, mid-ish June. That's about a month later than normal because they took a little break earlier in the session. And then current year revenue forecast coming in June. And then the deadline to adopt the budget is June 30th, although we are planning to adopt the budget sooner than that. Next slide. So for input for budget development, just some of the, next slide, please. Major focus areas that have been under discussion. So certainly employee recognition and compensation, strategic initiative investments, addressing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, and disproportionality. The mechanism being differentiated funding, the replacement of school resource officers, and mental health supports on also addressing learning loss and response to the pandemic. Next slide. So there are many, many groups that are able to provide input through meetings that occur throughout the year. So just to run through these real quick, the District Accountability Committee, school stakeholders who are providing input through their school accountability, which runs up through the District Accountability Committee, Principals Advisory Committee, the Latino Parent Advisory Council, Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, public comments at school board meetings, superintendent school visits, District Parent Council. We've had 12 topics at nine school board meetings and work sessions this calendar year, I mean, this school year, and then also through the superintendent's cabinet. Next slide. So these, just to run through these quickly, are recap of those meetings and when they were. So back in early September, strategic plan update. Mid-September, work session with SRO and law enforcement data. We had a work session in later September on budget update for the current year, being rather unique in funding, as well as looking at the budget development process for this current, this upcoming year. Next slide. Another work session on the comprehensive annual financial report. Board meeting where we had the budget development milestones and process. Getting some feedback there. Milestones, then we had the Board of Education meeting with the DAC, District Spending Priorities, presentation in early January, as well as the revised budget for the current year. Then in late January, work session on the Strategic Draft Financial Plan, presentation and discussion. Next slide. And, whoops. There we go. Strategic plan update, and then a work session on the second quarter financials and mid-year analysis, which is really a launching point for budget development for the upcoming year. Next slide, enrollment. So this is a quick overview of enrollment. And I put on this slide the three years, both the projected year, current year, and prior year, just to show the transition that we've had over those three years. So while we're projecting an increase of students for next year from where we are this year, we had a pretty significant drop in students in the current year. So that three-year trend, we're still down over 1,300 students from where we were a couple of years ago. The projection is that we will return some number of those students as school, as students return to school. And, but it's such a different enrollment projection methodology than has existed in decades prior that it's really a little tricky to project exactly what the enrollment is going to be. Next slide. So the preliminary budget and beginning to dig into this. This is just a real quick overview, so we'll go through the General Operating Fund, revenues, transfers, expenditures, pending legislative impacts, one-time resources and uses, summary of changes. And then other funds, the notable changes related to other funds besides the General Operating Fund, and then some next steps. So with this, now we'll transition over to the handout that I gave out as this is more into the detail of the numbers associated with the preliminary budget. So I'll walk through each of these. And certainly we can stop at any section if somebody has a question or wait until the end either is fine. So starting at the top, and this is kind of color-coded. So numbers that are in red are a use of resources or a shortfall of resources or reduction to resources or a use of resources. So red is kind of using things up, and blue is either a positive balance or a reduction in spending or something like that. So starting at the top, we're projecting that our funded pupil count from current year to next year is going down by 822 students. So this is enrollment averaging. That's why we're not seeing the growth of 275 students that we're projecting, but we're realizing that drop kind of over a couple of years. Excuse me.
Phil?
Yes?
So the legislature is not going to do any averaging for the next year on student count, is that right? So we're back to?
The standard averaging will occur.
Right, so nothing like we did where they gave us a break for the number of students we lost during the pandemic?
So for the most part, what the legislature did in the current year was take the resources that were put into the total allocation for K-12 and essentially increase funding out on a per-pupil basis. They just, they ran the standard averaging. Now, there was some backfill for districts that had a really significant loss in students or some other local funding changes, like the 2%, I think was the maximum loss that a district could receive. So it was the standard averaging. They just put more resources into it than they had to.
Yeah, that was my understanding. That was for this, this current budget year, but for next year, they're not doing anything, is my question?
Right.
Okay.
Just the standard averaging. So projected increase of the 2% inflation and then the reduction of the budget stabilization factor to get us back to the 2019-2020 year. So that's reducing it from over $1 billion down to $572 million is still the reduction relative to the budget stabilization factor. Projected increase in revenues, just over $19 million. We do have a reduction projected in the mill levy override of 20, our 25% mill levy override. So it's just a reminder that the, the way that functions is we're funded on that override on total program funding before the negative factor. So we've already received the benefit of that funding restoration for reducing the negative factor. And this is really a reduction in that total funded student count that's coming into play there. At this point, we're projecting a reduction in special education reimbursements, the categorical funding. That's a reduction in the number of students that are being qualified for that. And then a small increase in state categorical, overall state categorical for the 2% inflation. We also have a current year in 2020-2021 balance in the budget of $3 million of ongoing available. So this will roll forward into next year as being ongoing resources available. Next section, we have some transfer assumptions. So first off is the transfer to the charter schools. So this is the charter schools portion of that per-pupil revenue increase. Some small changes in the override funding for charter schools. The CPP Fund, the Colorado Preschool Program Fund, we fund that based on PPR. So as PPR is increasing, there's a little increase to the CPP Fund. For risk management, $100,000 for property and liability insurance, the premiums there. And then for the Food Services Fund, a reduction of the transfer, so a reduction in expenditures, $450,000. That was planned with the implementation of the central kitchen. So we're realizing, now that we had sort of a pause year with the pandemic, realizing the full implementation of the central kitchen. And this was kind of in the plan all along, but we're realizing it now. And then an increase in the transfer to CAP Reserve Fund for the bus replacement cycle. So what we do is we lease buses on a five-year cycle. It allows us to get a few more buses in the door by doing that five-year lease, and then they last for about 15 years. But those ongoing dollars are kind of repurposed every five years to keep that replacement cycle going. Next, moving into the compensation section, so we have-
La siguiente deapositiva.
Salary schedule steps, lanes, horizontals, and attrition. So this is for all employees.
Para todos los empleados.
$2.7 million related to the, the salary schedule movement.
En el journ.
Next, we have a 2% cost of living adjustment, $5.5 million. We've noted here that there is no change in the para employer rate this year or for next year. There was one in this current year. And then we have a 2% increase in the premiums for health and dental insurance at about $0.5 million. So once again, our health insurance plan is really operating very well for the district, keeping those premiums pretty low. So overall, $8.8 million in compensation adjustments currently built into the preliminary budget. So after we start with that revenue increase and take those transfers and compensation out, we have $10.7 million, which then moves to the next section. And we start making some further adjustments based on projected changes. So first off, we have our staffing formula changes. So we, in the current year budget, we adjusted all the ongoing staffing for the number of students we had. So we moved a lot of staff onto one-time resources in the current year. And so what this is adjusting for, that increase of 275-ish students going into next year. So we're adding some staffing back for that enrollment return. We also have a little adjustment to the high school counselors, 1.7 FTE, just to bring up the pool of counselor resources at the high school level to the, what the allocation methodology would indicate is needed. Next, moving into some other, so these are all ongoing expenses at this point. Student assessment system. So this is, there were a number of things that we funded in the current year on a one-time basis. So some of these are coming back that we're now funding on an ongoing basis. So these two in particular, student system, DreamBox, which is a math program, online math program. Moving on to page two. Career and technical education. So this is a program expansion and supports for CTE, $350,000. Concurrent enrollment, just under $100,000. Curriculum materials, $1 million. So this will be combined with some one-time resources in the next page. The plan at this point in time is to work up the increase in the ongoing funding for curriculum materials over probably two or three years to get to a place where we're funding our materials on a more reasonable basis. If you'll remember back to our strategic financial plan conversation in January, we have a table in there that shows our expenses relative to our peers. We spend about half as a percentage of our budget on textbooks and materials compared to others. So we're about 3%, and everybody else is about 6%. So this will kind of move us in that direction.
Bill, if I, if I could just add one more comment to that as well. As we think about the burden that places on our teachers, if they don't have updated materials and we're not providing a curriculum, a reasonable cycle in updating our curriculum, then the work then ends up on our teachers having to curate and develop these resources. And so we feel like that this is a good investment, not just to get on track, but also to help and assist our teachers.
All right, thanks, Rob. Next, Teens Inc. So this is a Chinook West program up in Netherlands. So we have a contractual agreement with them, and so we are increasing the PPR for them. Next section we're moving into here, social emotional learning and support. So this is the SRO replacement that I mentioned earlier as a focus area. So we have a security component of that, $1.4 million, and a mental health component of a little over $500,000. We also have a small addition, $36,000 for school and district security operations. Next, moving into maintaining and ensuring adequate district operational functions. So first one on here, sub-teacher support, recruitment, hiring, and management, $300,000. The INFOR annual subscription. So this is our ERP system that we've talked about. It's the software-as-a-service implementation, so that going live in January. So the contract included increase in the ongoing maintenance for that, so we're rolling that in now. District utilities, $378,000. So we're seeing both some increased costs as well as some increased usage. Software inflation, Google Enterprise for Google Meet, IT repair, communication support. Now we're getting down into fairly small dollar amount items. Audit fees, so the, the contract for the audit firm that I believe is on the agenda tonight, it's going up a little bit. Sustainability management system, little custodial FTE for the new Halcyon building, some expanded square footers there, and then some contracted custodial support. So with all those ongoing adjustments, we still have about $3.8 million available in ongoing resources. Next, moving into the one-time expenditure list. So we have a third quarter estimate for our ending fund balance in the general fund of about $22.2 million. So this is a combination of both what was reported for the mid-year analysis and second quarter financials of about $18 million. We're projecting that to increase by about $4 million by year end. And then also using a little bit of the district reserve. So this is not the district's contingency reserve that is set at 4%, but just the additional reserve that we set aside in the current year budget. So using a portion of that as well. So going down the list here, the first two items are the targeted intervention and flexible intervention school supports. For, so this is a three-year amount of money, so it's, it's three times what would be the annual amount for these 32 schools in the targeted support and 13 schools in the flexible intervention support. $8.4 and $2.4 million respectively. Next, some curriculum materials. So $2 million in one-time for curriculum materials. Again, combined with that ongoing resource. The plan is to sort of transition that over the next two or three years, reducing the amount of one-time going into it and increasing the amount of ongoing. Staffing reserve, $3 million. You know, we've had lots of conversation about staffing reserve and the need to plan for next year and the sort of difficulty in projecting enrollments for next year. Some items related to the strategic plan, the continued unit development and completion of that project. Targeted intervention resources, tier-two intervention strategies, kindergarten enrollment marketing, fifth grade one-to-web Chromebooks. So this is a, this is a transfer to the technology fund, but it's just included in the one-time uses. Some Title IX training for students and staff. The equal school day transition year. So this is the late start supervision for whatever comes out of that. So we're just setting this aside to be able to address that. Career and technical education, some equipment and program development for $150,000. And then continuing the Pioneer to Manhattan bus route for the dual-language programs there. Maintaining and ensuring adequate district operational functions, additional one-time expenses. So utilities, so this is increased air handling, both gas and electric as related to the, all the recommendations out of the CDC. And what we've been doing this year is increased air handling. Software use analysis. So this is a three-year program to analyze the, all the different software programs and how much they're being used. Some staff and student badges, PD for principals, some communication support. SRO replacement, so there's some setup costs associated with the security staff for that. A transfer to the CAP Reserve Fund for the bond staff. There's some planning to start doing associated with facility assessment, things like that. Risk management fund transfer. So this is a premium and claim reserve of $1 million that we'll set up. So putting these resources in the risk management fund allows us to smooth what is historically some very spiky premiums for the liability and workers' comp. Because we're part of a pool, those expenses kind of spike, and then we have to pay for a little bit, and then they'll drop back down, so this will help smooth that out. But also, we have $100,000 per incident before we start getting into the property insurance. So this also sets up a little bit of a reserve for those claims. And then we also have included in here, in staff compensation, one-time payment, $2.8 million. So that's a 1%, the equivalent of a 1% payment for staff. The likelihood is that that will occur in the current year for a whole host of reasons. So it's kind of recognizing in this list that it'll use up some of the resources in the current year rather than be an actual next-year expense. And then we've also included the 7% emergency reserve, table reserve, and contingency reserve, all, all those new expenses. So moving on to the last page. Couple of little sections here. ESSER, the, the federal stimulus funding, ESSER II and ESSER III. So there are expenses that will be occurring next year. There's a significant amount of rules about what those resources can be spent on. So these are a few things that are identified at this point in time. It doesn't expend all of those resources, but gives a, an idea of some of the things that we'll be addressing. So elementary health reform, so this is an increase in the staffing. We did that in the current year, so this is continuing it as well for next year. Boulder Universal and BU Link, the staffing, increased staffing associated with that for the additional students that are in there for next year. We have our high-needs school support. So this is five schools over three years, $6.6 million. So this is in conjunction with the targeted and flexible support schools. Nursing services, continuing some of the nursing staff into next year as the expectations around the pandemic will, will continue to some extent, so we'll need to address that. We have air quality, CO2 sensors. So this is monitoring air quality in schools as we have that air handling turnover. There's a couple of items on here, student remediation intervention. There's no dollar amount on there. Summer school, there's potential COVID testing. There's, there's a number of things that could come along that sort of are in the, the thinking bucket, so to speak, of some expenses that we'll have kind of over and above and directly related to the continuing pandemic that is not expected to end immediately despite hopes and as vaccines get rolled out. So this will continue definitely into next school year. Then the last section here, the Operations and Technology Fund. So there is some one-time resources available in that fund. These are three particular projects identified, or the maintenance projects. There's, there's a list of those projects, but it's about $1.4 million for those maintenance projects. a list of those projects, but it's about 1.4 million for those maintenance projects. Time entry kiosks and devices, 250,000. And a facility assessment to do a thorough assessment of all our facilities, condition, and kind of what, what is needed after the bond program is, is getting pretty close to being wrapped up, kind of setting the, the baseline for going forward. That is the end of all those numbers. Certainly talk about any particular one. I think I have like two more slides left, and then we can jump back. Anyway, five minutes left, okay. So a few of the highlights related to this list of things. 17.4 million committed over three years for differentiated funding to close the achievement and opportunity in disproportionality. 11.6 million committed to staff compensation, 7.5 million for school staffing and staffing support. 4.1 million committed to curriculum materials and development. 2.9 million committed to facility improvements and assessment. And 2.1 million committed to address school security and social emotional support. So this is very high level of, of some of these numbers, just to give an idea of the, some of the areas that resources are being allocated. It's a combination of both ongoing and one-time resources. Next steps, so the legislature ends June 12th. That, as I mentioned, is a little bit later than their normal timeline, which is earlier May, hopefully a little earlier than last year for sure. But the School Finance Act will be done towards the end of that, as it usually is. The feedback I've gotten is that there's some limited potential for funding improvements. There is some hope for some additional special education funding as we're nowhere near reimbursed for the level of services provided, but it's not a significant amount of resources expected. There's always the potential for unfunded mandates or new programs that the legislature can put in place. On May 25th, we'll have the data collected from our proposed budget, so comments on the proposed budget, the input data from that. So we'll have an online public survey to collect some feedback. Then we'll have that, that same meeting, May 25th, the proposed budget as a study item, and then proposing June 8th as the adoption date for the 2021, 22 budget. That's the end. Any questions?
So do we have an opportunity to ask questions again during the board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So would everyone be okay if we did it then? Because then it would be in the public eye or during our?
Yeah, it's fine.
Is that okay with everyone?
And I have another question related to that.
Yeah.
Because I have a bunch of questions, not surprising. I don't want to take a little board meeting either. So will we have another opportunity between now and the end of May to ask questions? Because that seems like a long time ago.
Well, I'd say certainly the board can ask questions anytime they like.
I understand, but.
But there's not a scheduled
So we have another opportunity between now and the end of May to ask questions?
It's a delay.
Because that seems like a long time ago.
So no, there's not a
Certainly, the board can ask questions anytime they like.
I understand, but.
But there's not a scheduled
So we have another opportunity between now and the end of May to ask questions? Because it's a long
In case you didn't get it the first three times, Bill.
Should I try again?
Kathy, what were you thinking, right? Are you thinking about having just another public session, ask questions about budget? Do you?
Either another work session or another public session. I just, there's a lot buried in here, and I think we can get some of it tonight, but there's other questions that I think.
Should I try again?
Kathy, what were you thinking, right?
So how many more work sessions do we have? We have, I mean, our public budget sessions.
One at the May 25th board meeting.
Well, and then we have the adoption.
And then the adoption, yes.
So we have two more.
Yep.
All right.
And no work sessions.
And no work sessions.
I mean, that's always up for discussion. If the board feels like that you want another work session, we can work to make that scheduled and planned and answer any questions you might have, which would be different than our typical process, but it is a bit of a different year. We've got the ESSER funds that we have to talk about. It's a little bit different. We've got some, you know, some of the, the enrollment projections are very much projections, right? You know, we, we're, we've made some assumptions based on the best information that we have. I would, I would just ask the board to weigh in on, on what it is that you'd like for us to set up. Certainly, we're, we're happy to set something else up if, if you all feel like that that's something that you'd want to do.
Richard?
Just a quick question, Bill. The public input, you know, the public input meeting that we're going to be having, have we ever in the past made any adjustments to the budget after public input? Or is it just a public input to public input?
So we certainly collect the feedback at, you know, at every meeting that has public comment, you know, there's, there's individuals making, making comments and suggestions. The feedback that happens in May is really intended to be focused on the proposed budget as it exists at that point in time. Certainly, anybody can make any comment they, they would like. Have we recently made changes based on public comment? Not that I'm aware of, although the public comment has been somewhat limited.
I, I, I think that we've certainly made adjustments to our budget based on the input that, that we've collected from our, our stakeholder groups throughout the process, right? And I think that, that this budget, along with budgets in the past, have reflected some of those priorities, to the extent that we've made eleventh-hour changes because of the, the final presentation. I don't, I don't believe that we have since I've been here.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering what the utility is in terms of having that public input if we're just doing, just showing the budget to the public and the input, and we don't do anything about it?
Well, I think it's just one opportunity. I mean, some, people can speak to the budget at any meeting at any time, and that's just one of the many, many opportunities. And I am, I would imagine there could be public input that maybe all seven board members agree with and maybe not. So just because you show up and make one comment, one person, doesn't mean you'll get a budget change.
I know that.
So I just, you know, we, we have people ask for a lot of things throughout the year, many of which we consider and many of which we don't, in my experience over the last eight years.
Well, I see some things in this, this current budget now that I think have been added because of a lot of public input, so I understand that. But I'm, I guess my question is, I'm wondering about the utility of having that particular meeting, if we're not going to do anything about it? That's my question.
Well, and it's a good point. There are so many opportunities, maybe we don't need that meeting. So that's, you know, I think we like a noticed budget meeting, and Randy's done, and the communications team have done an incredible job noticing the budget opportunities throughout the year and also providing through social media recaps of what's happening at the board meetings. So I feel like the communications externally about what's happening at the board have been better than ever, which has made me feel a lot more confident about that whether the community, at least if they're interested, they can find the information. So I don't know if you all see those communications, but they've been really good the last couple of years, so.
Well, I just want to reiterate that this isn't like the last couple of years, and we still don't even know what all our ESSER dollars are and how we're going to spend them. And I think we need to think about what our process is between now and the end of May.
I think we could schedule another work session in early May. Is that the timing? Late April? I mean, it doesn't make a difference.
All our ESSER dollars are and how we're going to spend them. And I think we need to think about what our process is between now and the end of May.
I think we could schedule another work session in, in early May. Is that the timing? Late April? I mean, it doesn't make a difference.
All our ESSER dollars are and how we're going to spend them. And I think we need to think about what our process is between now and the end of May.
I think we could schedule another work session.
If there's any way we could stop that, be awesome. Board meeting flashback.
Rob, that was the understatement of the night.
How about Laura, Rob, and I work to put in another work session? And we'll just kind of leave it there.
I'm, I'm actually feeling really good about this idea, you know, because I think it gives us another time to talk, gives us another time to kind of dig in, ask some questions, another time to consider new information. You know, how we engage our public around what we're doing as we start to feed into the next year and, and the following year, and how do we leverage some of those ESSER dollars in a way that's going to support our community the best, I think is absolutely time well spent. So we'll work together and work with Tina to get that set up. Thanks for the suggestion.
Okay, so if we hold our questions off until the regularly scheduled board meeting, do you want to take a five-minute break, and then I'm going to try this again?